Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 22, 2019 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call?
Councilmember Zagajanyan?
Present.
Devine?
Here.
Quintero?
Here.
Garpadian?
Here.
Aaron Najarian?
Here. Mr. Quintero, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation, which will be delivered by Chaplain Al Garcelazo of Adventist Health Glendale.
I invite you to bow your heads with me as I pray. Dear God, we are glad to be here tonight at the city council meeting and just thank you for the civil and religious liberties that we enjoy. I pray that you will bless our mayor, city council members, and all those who live and work in Glendale. And as we conduct our meeting here tonight, may our words and deeds reflect your love and your grace. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Thank you. And may we have your report.
The agenda for the October 22, 2019 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, October 17, 2019, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thanks. Next item, please.
Presentation and appointments. 3A is presentation, is agenda preview. 3A is agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, October 29, 2019.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. Nice to see you.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, council members. So, on October 29th, we will begin with the Glendale Housing Authority Meeting, starting at 3:00 PM. And on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of October 8, 2019. That will be followed by a special meeting of the Glendale City Council. And there's two items on that agenda. One is a Director of Community Development regarding discussion and direction regarding Alex Theater Management Funding and Future. And at 2 is an item from the City Clerk regarding calling for and giving notice of the general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, March 3, 2020. And then, we will also have a joint special meeting between the Glendale City Council and Glendale Community College District Board of Trustees, which will be held at Glendale Community College in the San Rafael Building of Cridle Hall at 1500 North Verdugo Road in Glendale. This meeting will commence at 5:00 PM. On the agenda will be informational reports. One will be GCC Highlights, a key asset for the Jewel City. Two is GCC Special Programs, Opportunities Found in Few Community Colleges, followed by GCC Partnerships, Effective Use of Tax Dollars to Fulfill Common Missions, and GCC Facilities Plans, Measure GC Serving the City and Region, followed by a discussion and during which council members and college board members will discuss perspectives. And that concludes the report.
Thank you. And that meeting is open to the public?
Yes.
And any special, do we have any special parking information for those wishing to attend?
I don't believe we have this parking structure on top of the hill, and they can make their way down and get to Cridle Hall.
That's probably the, Cridle Hall is almost all the way down next to the administration building.
Yes.
So, that'll be an interesting meeting that we have with our colleagues.
And we'll make sure there's signage there for people to follow.
Great. Thank you. Next item, please.
Will be his proclamation designating the weeks of October 17 through October 31, 2019 as Filipino-American History Weeks.
That's great. Will those representing the Filipino-American community please come forward? Hello, ladies. How are you?
Hello.
Good evening.
We're all looking wonderful for you. Everyone's present. All right. Honorable Mayor Najarian, council members, staff, good evening. Thank you very much for allowing us to appear before you tonight. My name is Troy Kisa. I'm currently the President of Filipino-American Business Association of Glendale. With me are members and Board of Directors, to start with Ms. Marlene Kagatao, former president of FABAG, Josie Inakaia, she's currently Vice President, Delia Green, and then Ms. Nini Madonado, also former president for FABAG, Ms. May Malyari, and Ms. Jo Solomon Son. We are, not with us today is Ms. Edith Fuentes and Amy Bautista. We are here to invite all of you, staff and community, to join us on Saturday, October 26, from 4:00 PM to 8:30 PM at the Incarnation Community Center located at 214 West Fairview Avenue. We will be celebrating Philippine History Month with food sampling, folk dances, songs, Philippine-inspired fashion show, and many more. The event is free and open to all. Join us and share a wonderful and fun evening with everyone. Again, see you on Saturday, October 26, from 4:00 PM to 8:30 PM at Incarnation Community Center. And if you have any questions, we're happy to answer. Plus, we have personal invitations that we would like to give to you, so you have the schedule way ahead of time. Yes. And we're moving to a bigger space this time.
You used to be at the Holy?
The Glendale Public Library. Yes, yes.
Well, thank you very much for the invitations. I have a proclamation. Whereas the Filipino-American History Month is celebrated in the United States during the month of October, and whereas the Filipino-American National Historical Society established the Filipino-American History Month in the year of 1988 and is now celebrated nationwide. And whereas this History Month is also officially recognized by the California Department of Education, and in 2006, it marked the Centennial Celebration of Filipino Migration to the United States. And whereas the Filipino-American Business Association of Glendale, FABAG, will celebrate Phil-Am History Month on Saturday, October 26, at the Incarnation Church Community Center with cultural presentations, dance, songs, fashion show, and food sampling. And whereas the City of Glendale recognizes the increasing number of Filipinos who live and work in the city and joins in the celebration of Phil-Am History Month, and congratulates FABAG for their ongoing arts and culture awareness and expressions. And now therefore I, our Najarian Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim the weeks of October 17 to October 31, 2019, as Filipino-American History Weeks, and join FABAG as they celebrate Phil-Am History Month. And I am going to ask my colleague, Mr. Quintero, who led us on a great discussion of Filipino history just today. He was giving us a lot of background. I think it's only fitting and proper that he present this proclamation. And I'm not kidding either. He was telling me things that I'm glad I, I'm glad we brought him back on council to give us some history.
Thank you so much for this proclamation. We hope to see you all on Saturday.
Thank you. Starts at 4 until 8. We can drop in throughout that time. Is that right?
We're leaving the schedule of the program, so at least, you know, went to.
Thank you so much. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to just say that I'll be there, of course, and I'm sure most of my colleagues will be there as well. But I'm so glad I got the memo on wearing pink today, right?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you all. Thank you all. You're great. Just great.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item on the agenda at 3C is a proclamation designating November 7, 2019, as Glendale Gives Thanks Day.
Thank you. Will our religious leadership members please come forward? Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like you to tell us about this wonderful event, again, that we are going to be participating in.
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor, councilors of the City of Glendale. It's indeed a joy and a privilege to be with you this evening. We stand together tonight as members of the Executive Committee of the Glendale Religious Leaders Association, and also members of the Planning Committee for the Glendale Gives Thanks Annual Prayer Breakfast. As you are well aware, for more than 55 years, the ecumenical community of Glendale has come together along with city leaders and people who bear influence into the community, to pause and give thanks, to give thanks for life and to give thanks for community. We are undertaking that again this year on Thursday, November 7. Doors opening at 6:45, breakfast serving at 7:00 A.M., program at 7:30. And this year, we have the wonderful privilege of hearing, for entertainment purposes, the Glendale High School Jazz Band, and for inspirational purposes and leadership purposes, to hear the honorable, most excellent Archbishop Dodarian of the Western Diocese of the Armenian Church. And we are very excited about his presence with us this year and the presence of Glendale High School and the presence of our community. So, we invite you and all who are here to be a part of that together as one community as we celebrate the theme, "One Glendale." One Glendale. And may we be one as we celebrate together. For those who may be watching this evening, as well as those in the room, I encourage you to go to glendaleprayerbreakfast.com. That's glendaleprayerbreakfast.com, and make your reservations so that we can know to expect you. And again, we thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening.
Thank you. Although it is an early event, it is certainly fulfilling, both in terms of breakfast and the spiritual content. I have a proclamation. Whereas since 1963, one day in November has been dedicated to Glendale, giving thanks for all its many blessings. And whereas it is important to give thanks for the countless bounties we enjoy. And whereas Glendale Gives Thanks Day is a day for celebrating the endless benefits our City of Glendale continues to be entitled to, let the Glendale community observe this day by starting the day in reflection, gratitude, and celebration. Let this observance continue to be manifested at the Glendale Gives Thanks Breakfast. And whereas the diversity of Glendale citizens is one of the reasons our city is so great, let us each give thanks humbly, showing gratitude for our abundant good fortunes. And now therefore I, our Najarian Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim November 7, 2019, as Glendale Gives Thanks Day, and encourage all Glendale citizens to explore this day in the way that celebrates and best satisfies each of our cultural and devoted beliefs. Let us truly appreciate the many windfalls our community is privileged to be recipient to. Thank you. Mr. Zagajanyan, would you please present the proclamation? Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item is consent items, including minutes following our routine and may be acted upon by one motioning member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration. May do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
Is there a motion for the consent calendar, Mr. Quintero?
Consent calendar. But I'd like to just pull the, the item regarding the final approval for the
Okay, so you're moving 4A and C. Will you second that?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Zagajanyan?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Garpadian?
Yes.
Aaron Najarian?
Yes. Please read 4B.
4B is Director of Public Works regarding approval of the final map of tract number 74974 for a six-unit condominium subdivision at 634 and 700 East Lamita Avenue. 4B1 is a resolution approving the final map of tract number 74974.
Mr. Quintero.
Just wanted to have someone from Housing just kind of let the public know what it is that we've approved, just to kind of talk about the project, its finally kind of fruition.
And I apologize, no tie. Good afternoon, Mayor Najarian and city council members. Mike Fordy, the product manager for the city. The Habitat Lamita Project, we just recently celebrated the grand opening of that project. I think it was August 2. It's a six-unit townhome project. The city acquired the site. It was two single-family homes owned by the same property owner. We bought the property for $980,000. And I believe we committed a total of $1,405,000 to the project, all federal dollars. We relocated the two households that were there and let police and fire use the two homes while they were vacant for training purposes, and then ultimately raised the two homes. After it was cleared, transferred the land ownership to San Gabriel Valley Habitat. So, it's the ninth partnership that we've had with San Gabriel Valley Habitat to develop those six units. So, this is the final step here for the new homeowners to actually take title to their townhomes.
So, yeah, it's a Habitat for Humanity project.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll move the item. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Zagajanyan?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Garpadian?
Yes.
Aaron Najarian?
Yes. Next item.
Next item is city council and staff comments.
I will start from my left, Mr. Garpadian.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have only one item I would like to nominate, Ms. Jane Wyer for Arts and Culture Commission.
Thank you. That'll be on our agenda. Well, that, is that it?
That's it for today. I attended so many events, but I don't want to go over all of them. People know where we are.
Mr. Zagajanyan?
Yes. On Friday, past Friday, I represented the City of Glendale as the voting delegate at the League of California Cities Annual Conference in Long Beach at the General Assembly of that League. There were two resolutions that I voted for on behalf of the City of Glendale. The first was a resolution calling on the California Public Utilities Commission to amend Rule 20A to allow overhead lines in very high fire hazard severity zones to be added to the eligibility criteria list for undergrounding such lines, and to increase funding allocations for such projects. As you may know, we have this fire hazards continuously. We have a problem with wires, overhead wires. The other resolution called upon the federal and the state government to restore and ensure proper funding for the U.S.-Mexico border water infrastructure program, and to have the two countries work together to address water quality issues coming from Mexico's Tijuana River into the, into the United States that contains untreated sewage, polluted sediments, and trash. So, this was the two resolutions that I voted for.
Good job. Thank you for taking time out.
Thank you.
To handle that for this evening. Ms. Devine?
Thank you, thank you. First, I've gotten word that some of the stores, Ralph's and Vons, up in the Foothill area, are using trash plastic bags. And so, I'd like for staff to look into that. And what is the method of enforcement on that? Is that complaint-driven as well?
Like everything else, yes. So, if we get a complaint, you know, notice a violation and.
Because as I understand it, they're using them all the time, and we have a ban.
Something we can follow up with.
Thank you, thank you. Second, you know, I've been attending some homeowners' meetings and listening to emails that I'm getting and residents that I've been talking to, and there seems to be a concern out there about the lack of police presence in neighborhoods issuing traffic violations. And so, I'd like to have staff look into perhaps a method of dispelling that idea that there is a lack of police presence. And I'm, you know, I'm suggesting perhaps a rotating traffic enforcement program, kind of like we do the checkpoint programs that we get are funded for. So, I know that about a month ago, I asked to have special enforcement done on Chevy Chase Canyon, because that's one of the areas that I get, and I'm sure my colleagues get a lot of complaints about. And the police went out there, and there was a police presence, and I received emails and favorable comments that they were there, that they were doing what the residents wanted them to do, and that they noticed a difference. Now, of course, the difference may last only a couple of days or maybe a week or so, but still, there is that presence that's out there. So, I think areas like Kenneth Road and Glen Oaks Canyon, Verdugo, Kenyatta, most of Pacific, we need to see a police presence. And I'd like to see something like a couple of hours a day at the different sites rotating around the city. I'm not going to, I don't want to micromanage and say how this can be done, but I'd like for staff to look into it, maybe with the police department, and see if there's some way that we can have our police presence at, you know, a couple of hours during the day at certain areas, so that our residents know that you are out there. I know you're there. I've seen you there. I can, I can attest to that in more ways than just seeing you there. But anyway, I know you're out there. So, if staff would, could look into that, I don't know if I need a second from my colleagues or on that kind of a.
That's been a topic, Councilmember Devine, that's been a topic of discussion, especially after last week's presentation by the Northwest Homeowners Association or at the Homeowners Association. I've been speaking with our police chief, and we'd be happy to have him make a presentation to you on how we actually deploy units, what drives that, how we identify the locations, and so on and so forth.
That would be perfect. Thank you. And lastly, this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, thus the pink. But, so I just want to impart to all of the women that are watching out there that are 40 or above, to be sure to get your mammograms. Men, it's all about self-examination and going to the doctors. But, you know, you could save your life just by being judicious about your mammograms and your exam. So, so please, it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Go have a mammogram, especially if you haven't had one recently. So, with that, I'm finished. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And to just add to your comment about the police enforcement, I do understand that our neighbors in northwest Glendale made a compelling case for increased traffic enforcement. So, don't blame us if your neighbors or yourself are ticketed. We seek to serve our communities, and when you ask for enforcement, we intend to provide that whenever possible, along with Ms. Devine's comments for the other areas as well. I have just two items. The first item would be a request from the city attorney to tell us, you know, we spent, this council spent so much time, and staff time as well, discussing issues such as the ADUs, how large we can make them, where they can be placed, issues such as rent control. And then, all of a sudden, the state comes in and usurps our local zoning enforcement. Can you please give us a report and let us know the ramifications of bills such as AB 68 and its companion bills, which essentially wipes out single-family zoning in the city, our city, and the cities across California. And I just want to express my disappointment in all the California legislatures who have taken such action, not just in the zoning field, but in many other areas, to usurp the authority of this body, which has been elected by you, the public, to determine the best way to run our city. So.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, as you note, the legislature took another stab at the ADU legislation and expanded the state's authority and liberty of the cities. We're actually looking through it because the bills, as you note, there's three of them. They had conflicting provisions. We're reviewing them and actually going to put something out as soon as we can. And actually, as part of the legislative update that the city manager's office is bringing in November, we'll have that discussion. But we're actually working on something to get to you as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Because there are some important changes.
Thank you very much. My last item is a statement that I would like to make, and rather than go back and reopen an approval of minutes for an item that was passed in July of 2013, I'd like to submit this statement and read it as a clarification of the intent of council at that time. This item has been a little bit obfuscated for at least seven years now, actually six years from July 9, 2013. That is the Sister City Park and Sister City Relationship Group that we have in the City of Glendale. In 2013, Mr. Quintero was here, we talked about forming a Sister City Committee and allocating and dedicating a Sister City area in our Central Park. And we need to make clear that any particular Sister City that contributes to a fund to promote their Sister City relationship with the City of Glendale will not be used for the maintenance of any other Sister City monument, display, or plaque. So, the Korean Sister Cities, any funding that they raise will be dedicated to their monument only. Any Armenian Sister Cities funding will be dedicated. be dedicated to their monument only. Any Armenian Sister Cities funding will be dedicated to any Armenian Sister City monument. Any Japanese Sister City funding will be dedicated to them, and so on and so forth. Also, at that time, there was a misunderstanding that all of our Sister Cities were interested in placing a monument in the park. We have to clear up that the Sister City of Higashi Osaka is not interested in placing a statue or monument in our Sister City Park at this time. They have not expressed an interest to do so. The staff report dated July 9th, 2013 was erroneous. However, in the future, should they so express a desire, we will be happy to accommodate them in any manner possible. But to be clear, at this time, they do not so choose to participate in placing a monument in our Sister City area. And I'm going to submit this for the record, and I have no other comments to make. I would like to, I would like to go out of order in the, oh, thank you. In the agenda, because I received a priority request from someone who will be speaking on Item 8B, is it still a matter of priority? I'm getting a nod of the head. Apparently, this individual has a plane to catch to northern California that leaves at 8:00 p.m. And our Burbank Airport is so efficient, thanks to my colleagues who are on the Airport Commission, that it's not likely to be delayed. So, Mr. Clerk, and folks, I apologize if you're here for the general public comments and those here on Item 8A. I'm skipping to Item 8B, if you can read that in the agenda.
Mayor and Council, 8B is City Attorney and Director of Community Development regarding sidewalk vendors and compliance with Senate Bill Number 946. View on is a motion directing staff.
Mr. Tactalia.
I am going to go directly over to Mr. Garcia.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. And while we get the PowerPoint up, I'll do it from here, if I can. As you know, the legislature, speaking of usurping local authority, Mr. Mayor, the legislature adopted SB 946 in, last year. And before I get into kind of the requirements, the overarching legislative purposes of this bill were to decriminalize sidewalk vending, remove local regulatory bearers, create economic opportunity for immigrant and low-income communities, increase access to desired goods, and create safe and dynamic public spaces. Okay, there we go. So, sidewalk vending, it applies to both, the rules apply to both roaming and stationary vendors, and applies to obviously vendors that sell food products and merchandise. So, there's a number of things that the state has imposed in terms of prohibitions or restrictions on local ability, local authority to regulate sidewalk vending. And then, there's a number of areas where they've added additional authority for cities to regulate. So, first and primarily, cities can no longer prohibit sidewalk vending. And it has also prescribed the ability of cities to make sidewalk vending a criminal matter. So, cities can no longer use the criminal code enforcement procedure to regulate sidewalk vending. The state law does allow the cities to restrict roaming, stationary, vending, and commercial zones. Cannot do so unless restrictions relate to objective health or safety concerns. And then, cities are no longer permitted to prohibit roaming vendors in residential zones. Continuing on, the cities are also prohibited from, prohibiting sidewalk vendors from operating in public parks, except for stationary vendors where there's a concession agreement between the local agency and a concession vendor. So, at the sports complex, we have an annual or ongoing concession agreement. And then, at Pacific Park and Montrose Park, we have seasonal concession agreements with the Little League organization. State law also now require, prohibits cities from requiring a sidewalk vendor to first obtain the consent or approval of any non-government entity or individual. So, from, for example, a business improvement district or from another local business, that might not be allowed anyway under state law. And then, state law prohibits cities from considering economic competition and establishing regulations. So, the impact, the economic impact of sidewalk vending on the traditional brick-and-mortar restaurants or stores or facilities may not be considered. It has to be solely on health, safety, and welfare type of concerns. So, what can cities do? So, cities can obviously require a permit. They can require vendors to submit information on vending operations, and then regulate hours of operation in commercial zones, as long as those regulations are not more restrictive than effective nearby businesses. So, you can't have one set of rules for brick-and-mortar and one set for, for the vendors. Cities may not, may, sorry, require additional permits such as health permits, making sure that vendors have their seller's permit from the Department of Finance, the State Department of Finance, can ensure compliance with other laws such as the ADA, and as I mentioned, the DTAP permit. Cities can prohibit sidewalk vendors within the immediate vicinity, within, and also within the immediate vicinity of farmers markets, certified farmers markets, as well as special event, special events that are issued by, you know, city permit. And I think it's incumbent upon us, if the council's going to adopt some regulations to define what that immediate vicinity means. And there's a couple of different examples that we'll refer to when getting to down to some of the points here. In addition, the cities can restrict or prohibit vendors from, oh, I'm sorry, touched on that already. As I mentioned earlier, no longer can cities use criminal code enforcement to prohibit or regulate sidewalk vending, but can impose administrative fines. And that's established by the state law under this schedule here, 100, 200, 500. And then, cities can also, obviously, then, after the fourth, undertake rescission or revocation in the event of continued violations. And then, for, if a permit is required, then a vendor without a permit is, can be subject to higher fines. So, if you're actually, one set of fines for not complying with a certain particular type of regulation, but actually operating without a permit, it's a different schedule, 250, 500, 1,000. Again, not criminal. Again, the state law also provides some latitude with respective vendors who cannot afford to pay, requires cities to provide an ability to pay hearing to anybody who wants to appeal. The city already has an appeal process and an administrative citation process, which this can be made part of if the council provides direction. The cities, as a city, we would not be able to require anybody who has an income at 125% of the federal poverty level or less to pay more than 20%. Or, the cities can, may allow a person to complete community service in lieu of the fine, or just waive it altogether. But there has to be that process for, for folks who cannot afford to pay. So, some of the things that we can discuss, the council has latitude on, obviously, the time, place, manner requirements for vending on sidewalks and in parks. Counsel, we would ask for direction if there are areas where restricting sidewalk vendors is necessary because of the health and safety and welfare criteria. And some of these, some of these sort of distance requirements or area limitations can include distance requirements to schools and areas of high pedestrian traffic, proximities to crosswalks and bus shelters and the like. And then, within parks, you can limit it to the walking path. You can have a requirement that they be close to an entrance or not close to an entrance. There's latitude there. Just to give you an example, I know in Pasadena and Santa Monica and even West Hollywood, there are certain areas that are known, even probably known to us as high pedestrian traffic areas. Old Town Pasadena, Pasadena Playhouse District, in Santa Monica, Third Street Promenade, in West Hollywood, certain areas along Sunset where they have a lot of nightclub activity. In those areas, they specifically call down the ordinances where sidewalk vending is not permitted. And, you know, again, there are probably certain areas here in Glendale that we can identify for sure that there's a high level of pedestrian activity, or we're trying to encourage high-level pedestrian activity, such as, you know, the Arts Park District. So, you know, the only caveat I would give, although it's sort of the warning going into that, is just our area has to be reasonable in scope and something that we can identify as having that level of pedestrian activity. I don't think we can, for example, have the entire downtown be prohibited, but there's certainly areas within the downtown that I think we're all aware of that have a high level of pedestrian activity. Also, we'd ask if council would desire to have a prohibition within a certain, within a farmer's market. We have, there's a farmer's market up at MSPA, as well as any special events. So, anytime there's a special event that the city has issued a permit for, we can prohibit sidewalk vending activity during that event and within an immediate vicinity. So, some cities have it, so it's within a certain number of feet within that, 500 feet. Some, it's in the same block. Some of Pasadena, I think, defines it as the same block and opposite side of the street on that block, and any street abutting it. So, there's latitude there, but we'd ask for some direction there. Counsel can provide, prohibit stationary sidewalk vendors in parks. So, we talked about that. So, in the areas where we have concession agreements, we'd ask if council's inclined to make a prohibition there. And then, the council has the authority under the state law to prohibit stationary vendors in area zone for exclusively, or in our single-family, multifamily neighborhoods, you can, where they're zoned exclusively residential, the council can prohibit stationary vendors, keeping in mind that will apply across the board to all types of stationary vendors. I would also, oh, so, obviously, you know, if we're going to have a program, we're going to have sidewalk vending program, the recommendation that we have is that the city permit be required. We would charge a permit fee in line with our cost to process that permit. They would have to get their county health permit. They would have to get their state sales permit. In addition, council can set hours of operation requirements. Again, they have to be in line with what our general hours of operation for our businesses in the area and our other operations. And then, sanitation conditions, you know, requirements that they, vendors who are selling, that they clean up their trash. If they're selling food, that they have a process to clean any stains or grease or trash that's left behind. A number of cities have done that in a variety of different ways. And we can, we can certainly put that into any ordinance that council wants to give us.
So, those are the general parameters. Carmen Moreno's here. If you have any specific questions about some of the ordinances that we, we've researched and have outlined. I do know that the DGA has presented a sample, we've only briefly had to take a look at some of its, certainly something that can be incorporated into what we have. Other things, I think we would need some further study. So, with that, I submit to you, Mr. Mayor, for any questions from your council.
Before we go to questions, I would like to invite Marco. Are you the one with the time? Are you the one with the flight?
Yes.
I'm going to invite you up first so you can have your say. And then, I'm going to go to questions from council and then pick up with the other speakers.
Thank you very much.
So, we don't delay you.
Yeah, it's at 9:00. It's not at 8:00. So, I got some breathing room. So, I'm all right.
Okay. How about if we go, how about if I ask you to sit down? Let's, let's do our traditional manner then.
No problem.
If you have any questions, then we'll go to the, you might be up soon, very soon anyway. Questions from council. I have a question. Mr. City Attorney, you showed the list of fines.
Yeah.
First, second, third offense, fourth offense. Are those prescribed in the ordinance?
In the state law, yes.
In the state law?
Yeah.
So, we are mandated to that fine schedule? We, we can't be any more strict if we-
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think I can answer that question. It's up to those amounts. So, if council were to-
Okay.
Want a lower fee.
Not greater than.
And I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself, Carmen Moreno.
Okay. Thank you, Carmen. So, the other question is essentially, it's a four-strike and you're out scenario. Fourth violation, we may, we may go so far as to rescind it.
Correct.
We can't put that in after your second strike. Two strikes, you're out. Three strikes, you're out. Has to be the fourth violation. If we decide to go so far, that's as strict as we can be-
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
-in the enforcement.
That is correct.
And that's the same with the non-permitted, the permit violation.
Not, not having a permit.
The 250, 500, 1,000.
It's up to those amounts. Yes.
But if they don't meet those income standards, then it's 20% of that.
After they have their ability to pay hearing.
Right, I see. Okay. So, I just wanted to, so, thank you, State of California. I'm not sure Glendale would have gone this route, but we have no choice than to obey straight to state law. Ms. Devine, what do you think?
Well, I just want to make sure that we would be within our limits or our boundaries if we banned them in the entertainment district, like from Broadway to Colorado or Harvard. Would, would we be okay with doing-
We would, let me answer it this way. We would have to make findings that banning them in that zone serves a public health, safety, and welfare. And I do think, based on the information that we have, that you'd be able to make those findings. We'd have to make them. But I think, given, like you said, the activity that goes on there, it's certainly, it's similar to the zones that the other cities have banned that we've looked at for sure.
Okay, great. Yeah, the rationale is so kind of oblique. You don't, you know, the health, safety, and welfare concerns, it makes it a little bit difficult to sometimes prove all of this. But I looked over the, the report, and, you know, I think the stricter we are, the better, within our limits. So, that's all I have for right now.
So, just questions. I'd like to go through questions.
Can you, can you explain with sidewalks and how that figures into-
Sure. So, as a time, place, manner restriction is something to protect health, safety, and welfare. It's our view, and many cities have already done this, have a requirement in terms of a minimum sidewalk width, which you can do sidewalk vending, and also have a minimum unobstructed walking path at sidewalks all the time. For example, if you're familiar with Union Street in Pasadena from Lake to Fair Oaks, apparently on one side of that street, the sidewalk's like seven feet wide. So, the city banned that sidewalk vending on that portion of the street for that reason. I think those are the types of things you can do. They also require 10-foot sidewalk, anywhere you want to do sidewalk, and then also five-foot unobstructed the entire time. And West Hollywood has something similar, but it's a sliding scale. So, that's certainly something that the council can include as part of its regulation. And something we'd probably recommend because it's important to have unobstructed sidewalks and have wide enough sidewalks for this type of activity to occur.
Mr. Agajian?
Are we prohibiting this sidewalk, or, I mean, the vendors in residential areas?
You can prohibit stationary vendors in residential areas. You cannot prohibit mobile or roaming vendors in residential neighborhoods. You can impose some operational requirements such as hours of operation and all the other permitting requirements, but you cannot ban them absent. And again, same thing, though. You can impose regulations where you can justify if the sidewalks in a particular residential neighborhood are particularly narrow, that sort of thing, then you can certainly impose those types of regulations. You know, we have some, some number of neighborhoods that have very narrow sidewalks.
And then, I was reading, I guess, City of Pasadena does that. I don't know if we have a limitation. So, let's say, and a street is 13 feet wide, I mean, the sidewalk is 13 feet. So, they can take six feet of it? I mean, then-
They're not necessarily being assigned, unless they're, if they're stationary, they would be, right. But if they're, if they're roaming, they're not necessarily assigned a portion of the sidewalk. They have to be, because they're actually, they're required to roam. They're not, they're not, if they're roaming, if they're, get a permit as a roaming vendor, they cannot stay in one location longer than it takes to make their transaction. So, they're, but with respect to a 13-foot sidewalk, you can, the council would have the legislative authority to say, okay, if it's a 13-foot sidewalk, we want at least six feet of that to be unobstructed. So, the vendor would be, would be limited to using the other seven feet in that example. So, you can, in a sense, I guess you're limiting them, but you're not, for those roaming vendors, they're not getting a lot of space. The stationary ones, they would be. And you could, of course, require them, as part, what we envision is that a stationary vendor would be required to submit an application showing where they're going to be, showing the dimensions of their, you know, setup as part of the permitting process. So, the staff will be able to verify that they're meeting the requirements of whatever measures you put in place.
The next question I have, okay, let's say if they are roaming, they're going back and forth. So, would be any limitation, okay, they go very busy place, and they go up and down, up and down. Is it okay? I mean-
As long as they're not vending in a place that the council has prohibited them from restricting. So, let's say you pick a entertainment district and say, no sidewalk vending. If they're doing that, then that would be illegal because- they're doing that, then that would be illegal because the council would have banned it. But if they're in an area where it's permitted, yeah, they can just literally, they'll just literally be able to go back and forth, as long as they're not vending in one of the prohibited places.
I mean, if it's, let's say, on school days.
Yeah.
I mean, they go very close to school.
Right.
So and they go back and forth, back and forth, and they are not stationary, so.
Correct. They could, although the council would have the authority to impose a rule saying, no vending from so many feet of the school, 100 feet, maybe 200 feet, we'd have to look at that. But certainly, a number of the cities that we've looked at have imposed that distance requirement to schools, and I think that's a reasonable requirement.
And if, what happens if the person moves one feet in every 10 minutes? So still is moving.
Very slow, moves very slow, you know, that'll be an interesting enforcement issue, yeah. I mean, it literally requires movement, so I guess if you're moving very slowly, there's no, there's no speed limit for the vendors.
Okay, thank you.
And who would enforce that?
You know.
Right.
Mr. Carpenter.
Based on current zonings that we have, does the law allow commercial activities in residential neighborhoods?
Generally speaking, no. I mean, there's, you know, a few like home occupation and.
But based on this, this law, the state, the AB that we have, Assembly Bill that we have, I can literally put a hot dog standing in front of my house and sell hot dogs if I want, if it's stationary, if it's.
Mobile, yeah, correct. If it's stationary, the city can ban.
Mobile.
Yeah.
So roaming, that's what they call them.
Roaming.
So how do we enforce the Health Department's regulations on these roaming vendors that sell food?
So I think what we envision is we'd be making, we'd be only making sure that they have the required permits from the County Health Department. The actual compliance with the Health Department's regulations would fall on the County Health Department. We're not, I don't think we're authorized to enforce those regulations.
And if they have stands on the corner and they sell, I don't know, pastries or fruits or what have you, is that stationary or it's roaming?
If they're on the corner and they're not moving, that's stationary.
And if they don't have a license, how do we enforce the law at that time?
They don't have a, so if they are, well, if they're not allowed to be, we won't be issuing permits for stationary, because, I mean, assuming council agrees not to allow stationary in residential areas. So if there's a stationary one there, we get a complaint, we'll go and probably issue a notice of violation or give them an advisement that they're violating the law. If they, you know, refuse or challenge our interpretation, then I guess we could issue them a citation, or at least a notice of violation. But it would be traditional code enforcement at that point.
So you cannot physically remove them from that location?
I wouldn't advise that without some sort of due process.
Okay, thank you, sir, Mayor. Thank you, Sacramento. Let me call up our speakers. Marco Mandri, followed by Randy Stevenson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for, City Council for hearing this. I think everybody, every city has been somewhat surprised, whether charter or general law city, that the state has usurped so much authority and power to what is your infrastructure, which is your public rights of way. The function of the Downtown Glendale Association under contract with the city is to manage the Greater Downtown District and report to you on that basis. The City Council knows that the impact of the property owners and tenants is significant to the economy of the city. What we've been trying to do, and we've told everybody, is our job is to create demand. We want demand for the businesses, we've done demand for the property owners, we want people to have a pleasant experience. So on the one hand, we're trying to create demand, bring more cars and people here, and on the other hand, the state is allowing a lot of these obstacles for all intents and purposes to try to fill our sidewalks in Downtown Glendale. All of this came about, just as a bit of history, by the unresolved issues at MacArthur Park. At MacArthur Park in Los Angeles, the City Council of LA would never deal with the illegal sidewalk vending for 20 years. So Senator Laura took it upon himself to, rather than just fix LA, to impose it on every single city in the state of California. So now about a year later, because this was signed in September 2018 by Governor Brown, now we're starting to look at this. We just want to say a few things. There's many cities in Los Angeles County that have already adopted these regulations, and I believe the city attorney has alluded to that most likely, or West Hollywood, you've mentioned Pasadena. Huntington Beach has created a really good ordinance, Downey has created a very good ordinance, as well as Santa Monica. What we're asking, because we have not presented an ordinance, and we know that the city attorney's office is not ready to present an ordinance tonight, but what we've asked is that the city council ask the city attorney to come up with a permit process, because the permit process regulates a lot of different things, like liability. Downey requires a $2 million general liability policy. Whether it's 1 million or 2 million, it means that you don't get sued and the Downtown Glendale Association doesn't get sued for what somebody does in the public rights of way. We believe that that's critical. The vendor also needs to have full disclosure. What are they going to be selling? Where are they going to be selling it? Are they going to pick up their trash? Are they going to clean the sidewalks when they're done if there's hot dog stains or whatever all over the sidewalks? And one of our real goals, I think that you've heard what we've been trying to do, and I think Arts Act is a great example of that, we've been trying to create a great place. Placemaking is something that is a real priority for us. This is almost the antithesis of placemaking because it doesn't allow us to plan how we make great outdoor spaces. So we would really encourage the City Council to work with the city attorney and the DGA to at least come up with the permit process, ideally before the holidays, because the permit process will determine who can come in and who can come out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Randy Stevenson, followed by Rick Lemo.
Mayor Najarian, City Council members and city staff, my name is Randy Stevenson, the president of Stevenson Real Estate Services, and I own property located in the district encompassed by the Greater Downtown Glendale Association. I'm speaking tonight to urge you to take action as it relates to the city's need to institute a sidewalk vendor ordinance immediately. The state of California's action on sidewalk vending has imperiled cities with the prospects of the following added costs. A, maintenance of public areas. B, health and safety of constituents and visitors to the city of Glendale. And C, litigation and liability that the city surely does not need. If possible, the best solution would be to place a moratorium on sidewalk vending until a comprehensive ordinance can be prepared and brought to you for implementation. However, short of that, I urge you to take action tonight and direct staff to review the permit application language that's been submitted by the Greater Downtown Glendale Association, so that an enhanced permitting process can be implemented on an urgent basis prior to the holidays, which will undoubtedly bring an influx of sidewalk vendors and the problems associated with them to the city to peddle their wares. At a minimum, the implementation of a thorough permitting process will start to ensure that the sidewalk vending that does occur will have a mitigated impact to both the city of Glendale and its constituents and businesses. Please act with urgency on this matter. The community is counting on you to get this right and get it done expeditiously. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Lemo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are at a point in time where there is so much infringement on cities by the state of California that at some point you need to have the courage to protect our city. And what I mean by that is find absolutely every detail you can to not leave yourself open liability wise with the state ordinance, but also not to give up. As a major proponent of Glendale, I have to tell you that I am embarrassed. We are an absolutely perfect, exciting city, yet cities that are a lot less interesting than Glendale, such as Huntington Beach, Pasadena, Santa Monica, West Hollywood, Downey, even Los Angeles, beat us all to the punch. And they were able to protect the businesses that provide tax revenue to them where we have not. This is something that truly needs emergency action. We are a premier city, but we're a premier city that's 12 months behind all of those that compete with us. We can provide findings specifically regarding self-assessment from the district that proves we are charging ourselves to build traffic and entertainment areas on Brand Boulevard and on Arcsac. That's the reason we put the district together. The fact that we were willing to step up and assess ourselves should be one major factor to prove to the state that we are all very serious about building an entertainment area. We have been trying to increase pedestrian traffic. That should also be quite evident, that fits right under the state's requirement. We're in a situation where we're expecting people who pay sales tax and property tax in Glendale to also cover the expenses incurred from a business that will never pay tax, a business that will never pay an assessment into the district, a business that doesn't even join the local Chamber of Commerce. So all of a sudden now, my question to you would be, while it's not fair to discriminate against city vendors, street vendors, is it fair to discriminate against property owners and businesses? For example, if I want to open up a restaurant, I have to go through a permit process. I have to go through inspections. Yet, street vendors are allowed to open up restaurants wherever they want because we have no restrictions here. We are now spending $1,500 a month to clean up after one street vendor. And if action isn't taken, that can proliferate to dozens just during this holiday season. That's why it is so urgent to either put a moratorium in effect or to do an emergency permit process for the next 90 days. I hope you will do what's necessary. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. Joe Stiddick, Investment Property Service and DGA. I'm going to go to the short version because I think you've heard everything that you almost need to hear. There's no doubt that the street vending is going to have some impact on our retailers. And most of you know, or if you don't, 20 to 45% of a company's retailer's profits are made during the holiday season. It's a stunning number. So it's important they not be impacted in any form. It's been pointed out that the street vendors don't pay taxes, don't pay license fees, probably not members of the chamber, probably don't vote. So the question is, what's the benefit to the community? I understand that that creates a liveliness on the street and people like that type of thing. But the question is, long-term, what's the effect? And I think you want to consider that. I would endorse the City Council creating a short-term moratorium to allow the nuances between the city's desires and the state regulations to come up with a regulation that makes sense, rather than trying to grapple. We can't do that tonight. There's too many nuances to this. LA County Supervisors had a meeting today. They heard from their constituency on a particular matter. They voted on it, they agreed on the moratorium, and it's going to go into effect Friday. So I'm not saying that we would like you to have this in effect by Friday, but I think that it needs to be addressed and addressed pretty expeditiously, rather than being put on the back of the calendar. It's something that needs to be put into effect so that it's effective during the holidays. And you could, we can come back and all revisit this after the first of the year, spend time with the city attorney, providing our input, and then coming to the City Council with something that makes sense in terms of a regulation. Thank you.
Good question.
Thank you. Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Stiddick, can you repeat that about the, what did you say about the supervisors?
Yeah, LA County Supervisors, they had a vote on a particular item. They approved it. It's a moratorium, it'll be effective Friday. So they acted in a very expeditious manner, so I think it can be done.
So they put a moratorium in?
They put a moratorium on a particular item.
Not this?
Pardon?
Not this?
No, it had nothing to do with, I'm just talking about the expediency of making decision. I mean, it'd be terrific they had because that would be a good template to work from. Thank you.
Well, we've done moratoriums before on construction. The only difference that I see in a construction moratorium is, once you start building an apartment building, you can't undo that, whereas on something like this, it's perhaps easier to prevent any future use or continued use. But I'd like to ask the city attorney to address the issue of a moratorium and to inform us, we hear this urgency, obviously there's an urgency before we get to the holiday season. How fast your staff could incorporate any direction that you're about to receive from us into an ordinance and when such an ordinance would be taking effect? How soon it could take effect?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you know, we would take the direction from the council if the council wanted us to. We could certainly do something, you can't do a moratorium, I don't think. A moratorium is saying you can't do this activity until X, Y, and Z happens. But council can adopt urgency regulations, so you can direct us to come back soon so that we could have something. It would take an ordinance to be introduced at one meeting and adopted, another one adopted as an emergency. We could do it, you know, late November, early December, depending on council's desire. We could do it next week, we can't do it next week. But we could do it in a month if that was the council's direction. Well, you know, it may push other things aside in terms of our workload, but we take that direction from the council.
Okay, so you've got the power, the attorney power to move quickly if council directs you to move quickly.
We'll work at your pleasure, sir.
Okay, that's, I don't hear that all the time, though. I've heard otherwise sometimes, but, okay, so, and now, would you like us to comment on what sort of direction we'd like to see in a possible ordinance?
Correct. And I think that, obviously, we're in agreement to, you should have a permitting process. There might be some, you know, it might be easier to bring back a streamlined version of that until we bring back the broader version. I think we would have to have some analysis on our part, some of the broader things like insurance requirements. I know some cities have them, but I think there's some particular issues there, especially the way it's been proposed. But again, you know, that's, it's the council's direction. I do think that the, my, our view is that the issues you're going to have with street vending, you have to address through substantive regulation. The vendors themselves are just engaged in the business that you all allow to extent you allow and to extent the state says we have to allow it. So I think at the end of the day, the substantive regulations as opposed to what, how many, you know, what particular requirements you acquire of the vendors are going to be more important.
So is it best to start, just so we frame this discussion, because there's a lot of moving parts. You've told us what we may not do, so let's stay away from that stuff. But in the report, you've started with what we can do.
Sure.
Starting off with requiring a permit, requiring the vendor to, et cetera, you know, as we go down.
Sure.
Would you like us to go through that maybe and tell us how we all feel about that? Are you guys with me on this? So on page, and maybe we can get that up on the screen.
Maybe slide.
Mr. Kasakian, so we can see.
There, I got it.
Oh, you've got it there, okay. So we're stuck with that, that fine schedule is the maximum. Okay, let's, yeah, this is a good place to start. Would someone like to start off and address those items and add anything else that you think is pertinent? Or refer to any other ordinance? There's Pasadena, and there's Huntington Beach, and there's West Hollywood, and.
Instead of, if I may, instead of going through each one of these, I'd just like to say that I read the Huntington Beach and the Downey, and I thought the Huntington Beach ordinance was really specific and strict enough that we could base a lot of our ordinance on that ordinance.
Can someone repeat the points of the?
Sure.
The highlights of the Huntington Beach ordinance?
Sure, if I can, maybe Carmen, if I can get, just summarize. And the only comment I would have about the Huntington Beach ordinance, it is, it was expressly restrictive. I think the city of Huntington Beach is attempting to use its charter city authority to say it's exempt from a large part of SB 946. My view is, that's a harder, if you'd asked me that five years ago, I would have said absolutely, but the state has just continued to whittle down on. absolutely, but the state has just continued to whittle down on charter city's authority to regulate.
Did they get nailed on the RENA numbers?
No, they're being challenged, but, you know, what they do is they'll come in and say, cities, you have to do this.
That's a feisty city.
Even when the cities win the cases, saying you can't require us as a charter city to do that, the state will turn around and say, well, then we're going to make this continue someplace. I think the best way to approach it is to try to comply, you know, within the rubric of what state law allows, which I think there's still a lot of flexibility. Obviously, it's not as much as we'd like, but there's still a significant portion, but we'll, you know.
Okay.
Can you tell us what's in Huntington Beaches so we can?
Sure.
Maybe build off that?
So, Huntington Beach, the Huntington Beach ordinance is actually attached to the report, and just looking at their prohibited activities, they have, you can't use an open flame within a cart, you have to conduct your sidewalk vending activities. Let's see, you cannot conduct sidewalk activities anywhere within the city within the hours of 8:00 PM and 7:00 AM. 8:00 PM might be a little bit too early to shut down a sidewalk vendor in a commercial district, but that's what Huntington Beach has. They have that you cannot, they have that you have to be, stay away at least 100 feet from another sidewalk vendor. You have to be outside of the 100-foot area of an intersection and sidewalk, of a street, intersection of a street and sidewalk. You have to stay outside of the 100-foot area of any marina.
We don't have to worry about that.
Yeah, we don't have.
Not yet. We don't have our marina yet, though.
They have requirements, distance requirements for fire hydrants, automated ATMs, automated teller machines, driveways. They have 25-foot restriction for entrances or exits to a building or structure facility. That might be difficult in Glendale, but that's their distance requirements. They do not allow a sidewalk vendor to be within 25 feet of a trash receptacle, bike rack, bench, bus stop, that sort of thing, restroom, similar, public use.
I don't know if that would work in Glendale.
Yeah, I don't know. It says 100 feet between a street and a sidewalk where they intersect. I mean, that would take off whole city blocks, probably.
Yeah, well, I was looking at, if I may, looking at more broader aspects, basically to ensure interference with, you know, they cannot interfere with the performance of public safety officers, no interference with pedestrians, cannot interfere with bollards or vehicles, safe food. The one I, here's another one, they cannot be in the city between 8:00 PM and 7:00 PM. So, that would leave businesses that, you know, that would close them down when businesses and commercial restaurants downtown were really very active. Another one that I thought was good was Farmer's Market, and I think the Montrose Shopping Park Association, it says they are permitted, they are not permitted during the operating hours of certified farmer's markets. I think that's an important.
We can do that.
We can do that.
That is something Council may take action on.
Pardon?
That is something Council may take action on. If Council is so inclined to take action on certified farmer's market, we would just request direction on what is the definition or what Council would like the definition of within the immediate vicinity to be. As Mr. Garcia pointed out, some cities have blocks, one block, two blocks. Other cities have distance in feet, so Council can certainly provide direction. But the restriction would be only during the hours of operation of the farmer's market or the temporary special event.
Let me go to Mr. Quintero.
Well, for me, I'd like to do a streamlined ordinance, try to get it done fairly quickly. We can always come back and fill in the blanks if it turns out that we're flooded with vendors. I personally don't think that's going to be the case. I'm sure there are going to be some people that are going to take the opportunity to try to either sell some food or sell sunglasses, whatever it is, but I don't think we're going to be overwhelmed. I think for sure we have to require a permit and require the, if they're selling food, require the county certificate for health. Then, overall, when I look at Glendale, my concern would be specifically Brand Boulevard and how impacted Brand would be. I think there's going to be less of an issue on Central. Maybe some of the side streets like Broadway might become an issue. But to me, it's about trying to keep Brand free from vendors overwhelming the established businesses on our main avenue. But let's just get it done because I really don't think that, you know, we're going to get to the point where it's going to be such a nuisance that if it is, then we can just turn right around and, like I say, streamline the ordinance and put it into effect. And I do agree, for any special event or farmer's market, there are vendors that are paying money to participate in those events, so I think we have to keep them free. And some of the other ideas in the staff report, I thought, were also good.
So, let me just, let me ask you, are you okay with them telling us what kind of business they're operating? So, that's the second point.
A full operating permit.
Okay. The hours of operation, let's leave that open for now because that's something maybe we fine-tune. Require any health permits if they're doing food items or anything like that? I don't know how the ADA law applies, but.
Man, it's mostly about accessibility, and I think the goal, it's not compliant with some specific statute, but, you know, I think we, if the Council is inclined to want to have a minimum sidewalk width and a minimum unobstructed, then give us that direction. We'll go out and verify that that's sort of workable with our sidewalks. We don't want to say 20 foot sidewalks, and it turns out that, you know, eliminates all the sidewalks in Glendale. But if you're thinking 10 and 5 or something, you know, or you just want to give us general direction that you want to have a reasonable minimum sidewalk width in a minimum unobstructed sidewalk area, and then we can go out and kind of verify what would be workable. I mean, from my view, Pasadena is probably pretty sound, but if Council may desire something else, if we give you some options.
Okay. Requiring a tax seller's ID, so we want to make sure they pay taxes. How about the residential zones? No stationary?
Yes.
Okay. I think we agree with that? We agree. No stationary.
No stationary.
Parks.
The parks, so if we've got a concession stand in the park, then we don't want another stationary vendor in there. But the guy with the ice cream cart can zip through. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, one thing, just to follow up on that, I'm looking at the Pasadena's one. It says it prohibits sidewalk vending on, like in Pasadena City Hall, Civic Auditorium, any public property that does not meet the definition of a sidewalk. I think that has to be done. That just puts a general definition as to where they cannot be.
So, it has to be a sidewalk.
Any public property that does not, no. Any public property that does not meet the definition of a sidewalk. It eliminates all of their parks.
No, I don't think it does because they have to allow it in parks other than the stationary. So, they can say no to stationary. They can have requirements for residential, but, and I don't, I think that they probably include the parks in a different section of that ordinance or, but we can't say, we can't prohibit them across the board, the roaming vendors in parks. But you can have regulations saying, you know, they obviously, they have to comply with the hours of operation of the park. They, you know, so one of the cities, I think, has a requirement, if you're a roaming vendor in a park, you've got to be out of there an hour before the park shuts down. That way, you know, that way the park staff isn't trying to chase these guys around and get them out of the park. That way, they're out by the time the park closes. That's reasonable. But you can't have it across the board. But also, in terms of the other provisions that Pasadena has, it wouldn't make sense to include that. So, not allow them in the civic center, not allow them at the civic, not allow them at the libraries.
Archer Plaza.
Archer Plaza, that's, yeah, the Civic Center Plaza here, Archer. That's something that we probably can do.
Maintain sanitary conditions. We all agree with that.
And you're done, then I go.
Okay. I'm just sort of getting some general thought. Of course, the farmer's market prohibition, how far?
So, man, do you want to do distance? I think one way to do is within the same block and across the street, if it's across the street. That's.
Is that, that's not too close? I mean, didn't, didn't we have some, I know, but didn't we have some complaints about that from the Montrose Shopping Park, that they were too close when they were just?
I think so, and I think they were really close. So, I mean, you don't have to do a foot, the distance requirement.
50 feet, 100 feet? Is that what we're?
500 feet. 250, 500?
500 feet.
500 feet?
Yeah.
The special permit areas?
That'd be the same thing. So, if we're having. Cruze night.
Cruze night.
Right.
500 feet away?
In the area as well as 500 feet away.
Okay.
You're okay with that?
I'm okay with that. As well as high-traffic areas, so we're talking about areas where there's, when we spoke earlier, that there are certain areas that are high-traffic. Let's say, the corner of the, let's say, Crusoe Avenue and Brand. I mean, that whole block, we can.
Well, but if we, excuse me, but if we ban it in the entertainment district from Broadway to Colorado or Harvard, then that would take care of it. Could we do that?
We could. We could do that. We could do other areas.
On Brand?
Given the short timeframe, we're probably going to, if we brought something back in terms of areas to be banned, we're going to, we would probably touch on the areas that are really impacted that we all, it's very clear.
Okay, so I would support that. I would give your staff the opportunity to define those parameters. As well as schools, we can keep it away from schools, 500 feet or?
500 feet at least.
From schools?
Or in the same block.
Can we do that?
Yeah. I'm trying to think if, 500 feet maybe, we'll look at that, and if we think that that is too far, maybe we'll propose something like 250.
We can definitely look at that and see what other cities have done. 500 feet maybe, maybe a bit.
Yeah, and take it with some of those cities that have done it in the 100 to 200.
Bit of a distance. That might be too much.
Okay. Well, I would leave that to you to craft a defensible ordinance.
What happens that the vendor with selling, let's say, clothes, goes in front of the store with selling clothes? Then what do you do with that? Or hamburger place?
Fortunately, that's.
They go right in front of an hamburger place.
Fortunately, that is one of the areas where we're preempted. We can't stop, we can't, we can't base it on the impact, the competition that's going to happen.
That's very unfair.
I agree with you, but fortunately, the.
Thank you, Sacramento.
Our friends in Sacramento took a different view, so.
Is this, I mean, when you're, you come to a conclusion to present something to us, do you know that?
You know what? I'd have to sit down. I mean, if the Council's direction is you want something that would be in effect before the holidays, then I'll work with the City Manager's Office to carve out the time to bring it back, if I'm anticipating.
I was going to say the opposite. I want to do it such that we start beginning of next year, so if something is going to happen.
I think we're concerned about the Christmas season, the holiday season, so.
So many.
We can always fine-tune it.
Now, the reason I'm saying that, because at that time, everything is so busy, and now we are adding another factor that we will not be able to control.
Yep.
But if you start at a time which is, you know, it's slower time, so the vendors will do the business next year, so it's not going to interfere with regular.
Isn't just the opposite?
I think, I think there's a, I think there's a desire to move as quickly as possible to try and get it.
Yeah, I guess, and that's 100% policy call by the Council, which direction. The only thing I would add, drafting the legislation is one thing, then actually going out and making sure that the folks out there are coming in and getting the permits and having the staff available to actually process it, that's probably the bigger challenge.
Can we force them to join the DGA? Pay dues to the DGA?
I don't think so.
Basically, this is like Congress.
Because the DGA is a property-based bid, so they don't own property. They're on the right of way.
Let me ask Mr. Limo to see if he has a comment on that issue, since he's familiar with these organizations.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm absolutely certain that the way our city attorney is explaining is correct. However, as part of the permit process, there seems like you could at least ask them to place a deposit with the city so that if they go overboard, like this hot dog vendor has done already, the money is there instead of the city just getting billed by the DGA to clean up the sidewalks. That would be one way, is to say, okay, part of your permit is for cleanup, plain and simple. And what this is more about.
Like a cleaning deposit.
A cleaning deposit. Everybody else has to do it.
When you rent an apartment or?
Also, just to answer the question about a guy coming in front of a clothing store and selling ties, well, the fact of the matter is, there are certain things you can do. For example, so many feet on either side of a door. If you take a look at the window bay and they've got a 50-foot frontage, okay, then you need to be 50 foot on either side of the door. If they want to sell ties in front of a beauty parlor, let them try and accomplish that. But everybody in this city has to follow rules today, except for your street vendors. And enforcement's a big deal, too.
Thank you, Mr. Limo.
Thank you.
Does our economic development representative wish to comment on this? Because this is, in a way, economic development? I'm getting a no sign. Okay. We embarrassed Jennifer Hermoto. Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know what Huntington Beach is trying to do as far as using their charter city power, but do not underestimate the power of the charter cities when they come together in organizations like SCAG and bring a sledgehammer down. Don't underestimate the power of the charter cities. This is the most ridiculous thing I've ever seen in my life. Let me put it that way. It's like Congress makes all the rules and they're exempt from it. So, this is the same way. We made all these rules, but people who are not going to have insurance, liability insurance, workers come, they don't pay any rent, they can choose the best area and have a business there without anything. It's, how could this be? I don't know who the author of this bill was, but, anyways, I think.
Lara, Ricardo Lara, our new insurance commissioner.
Insurance Commissioner.
He did his damage and then he ran to insurance.
There you go. Thank you very much. I think we have to have minimum sidewalks, sidewalk width, so they cannot block it. Its ADA accessibility is important because many of the streets that we have wider sidewalks, there are tree wells, there are utility boxes on the sidewalk, so they cannot block those or make those sidewalks narrower than what it is today. I think that's very important.
Hold on. We okay with that? We want minimum sidewalk clearance issues?
Yes.
Okay. We're good with that.
As far as farmer's market go, and the vendors pay to be in the farmer's market, it's the same thing with the tenants of the downtown or any business district. They pay rent to be there, but yet they're being violated. So, farmer's market, I think, one block away from any farmer's market is important to have that. I really like some of the items in West Hollywood and Pasadena's one. I'm going to go over it real quick, see if you have any consensus on it.
Pause, so we can say yes or?
Okay. It says the City Hall.
Yes.
It's prohibited. It's prohibited to have a street vending. Civic Auditorium, any public property that does not meet the definition of a sidewalk. So, that's another one. Within 200 feet of police station, fire station, or hospitals.
Okay with that.
Okay with that. So, one other thing we need to consider is if we are allowing it in, because our blocks, the city blocks are 600 feet wide. So, if they're going to be 100 foot apart, I think it has to be 200 feet from another vendor, the distance between the two vendors, and not more than two per wide city block. So, that will eliminate having, I don't know, a hot dog cart in front of a high-end restaurant that spent $500,000 to install a hood in his or her restaurant. So, that's another one. 10 feet away from bus benches or bus shelters, they cannot be closer than 10 feet. Within five to eight feet away from the signal, traffic signals or controllers. Within five feet away from utility meters. Within 15 feet of any driveways or alleys. Are we okay with this?
I'm not. I mean, I don't know what that means or what.
I, I'm not, I mean, I don't know what that means or what.
Because what, what this means is, they're looking for a direction to bring an ordinance back, right? So what are they gonna bring back? Something that we have to come back and, if you don't have enough, enough strength in there, what are we approving? I don't know what are we approving. If you wanna give directions, that's-
They can, I'm sorry, they can look into it, the city attorney can look into it. If there are something that we don't like, we can eliminate, so they can look at the-
It's not eliminating, they're looking for directions.
It's not a safety issue presumably, that if they're too close to a driveway or an alley, it might block-
I think those are justified, and there, we could, you know, the direction on that, on that piece of it, sort of those Distance requirements is to follow, follow passing as model, we'll bring that back for you, and then the council can decide What you like and what you don't like.
And this one is really important, using amplified sound unless expressly authorized.
I was just gonna say noise, yeah.
They're all gonna bring their own music, and you're, same thing with the street performers, you're having, I don't know-
It's a requirement to have amplified sound, to have a permit, if you're gonna have amplified sound anyway.
So, I'll just couple more, if you bear with me.
So do we have the discretion to deny amplified sound? Or is that, if they just apply for the permit, we have to give it to them?
I think it's a, it's a mandatory thing, as long as they're complying with the standards and the ordinance for amplified sound.
Noise or nuisance?
So as long as they're complying with the decibels level and, and they're not, there's certain requirement, you can't do it at certain locations.
Right, there are four categories in the amplified sound ordinance. And pretty much, they have to be issued unless, and as I stand here, I can't think of the four items, but essentially not interfere With pedestrian or vehicle traffic, that's one. I can't think of the ones that I stand here.
So we have to permit amplified sound if they apply for a permit?
As long as they comply with the standards, correct?
We could require that they comply with our noise standards.
So, I'm curious about the insurance liabilities. Who will be responsible for this?
That was my next point.
There is this little place selling hamburger and say, I don't have money to pay for the permit, and then what happens with The insurance matters?
So with insurance and the indemnity, so there are some cities that require it, there are some that are not. You know, our view, I think, is that, again, the regulations you put on the substantive regulations are gonna be more important Than the requirements of the vendors. From a liability perspective, issuing a per, us issuing a permit to a sidewalk vendor is not gonna create liability to the city. So if it's a concern about the liability to the city, there's, there's case law in terms of the immunities that the cities have, As well as just not have, being liable for that activity. So my view, our view is, it's not necessary, but that, obviously, we require insurance all the time, even when something's Not necessary, because we think it's, it's prudent to do so. So that's a council decision to, whether it's prudent, the only thing I would, you know, advise, I think the intent of the Legislation here is to make it easier for vendors to comply, to be able to get into business of being a sidewalk vendor. And so I, I do feel like that there might be some challenge or criticism that comes our way by imposing that requirement, But I do think the council has liability, has that ability to do it. I think I'd, I'd wanna look at it a little bit more closely, make sure, but if the council wants to give us that direction, We'll bring it back and give you our opinion.
That as an option, that we can consider at that time.
And also, if we are not liable for the damages or some of the falls, the property owner will be liable for that?
No, it's the, it's the vendor or a third party, whoever hits, yeah. Obviously, we're liable if some, if our sidewalk is, has a problem, then yeah, then we're liable, that, that's something we're still liable for. But we don't, we don't create liability by issuing a permit to do something. The law's pretty straightforward on that.
Let's say they have this, this thing, this, whatever they have in front of them. Somebody doesn't look and trips and falls.
Yeah.
Then who's liable?
They are, the person who has-
The vendor?
The vendor.
The property owner is that?
If, as long as it's not, the property owner didn't do anything to cause the, cause the condition, which they, doesn't sound like they would.
They're gonna go after the property owner.
I understand, and they're gonna pursue the person. So I, I'm not saying it's not an imprudent thing to do. I just wanted to make sure no one's gonna say it exceeds our authority to impose that requirement. But if the council wants us to look at that, we'll bring that back as an option, and then we'll give you a firmer opinion on whether Or not that's something that we can do.
Yes, Mr.?
I think insurance is a must. People get hurt in front of one of these vendors or because of one of these vendors. They're gonna come back and say, look, you gave him a permit, he or she is on your property, because the city is, the property sidewalk Belongs to the city, and they're gonna sue the city. So insurance is, I think, it's, it's very necessary, as well as the sanitation condition of this, of the vendors. How, how to keep the, either they pay the DGA to clean up for them, or they will have a cleanup deposit that, I think that's A must as well, to, to be able to keep the city clean. They're working really hard on every part of the city, it's not just the DGA. They're working hard, they're spending a lot of money, they tax themselves to keep the streets clean, bring more people in, And now we're having this issue of, you know, free-for-all. So I think it's, and also the residential areas, I don't know, we haven't talked about residential areas much, but I think, How about the, can we, is it allowed anywhere in the residential neighborhoods? Or can you say it's only, it could, it's allowed only on major streets, like, I don't know, Rodrigo or what have you, Glen Oaks Or what have you, not the side streets or narrow streets? Because there is no sidewalk, I mean, the residential neighborhoods, they most of them have very narrow sidewalks. If I put a cart anywhere, it's gonna block the sidewalk.
Correct. So that, that part of it would probably something we have to look at. The stationary, again, we provide those, the mobile, you can impose a restriction based on sidewalk width, but you can't say No on a certain street, you'd have to say no, not allowed on a sidewalk of a certain width. I think the reality is, is more likely to occur in commercial zones and in parks, and I think that's why the legislature geared The statute that way, because they wanna allow the vendors to be able to go into parks and go in, but allow, not, not create A condition where they're gonna be cited for being in the residential zone. So that part of it, are any of the cities have any further restrictions in residential zones for roaming beyond, beyond, you know, Allowing it, the roaming in residential zones anyhow?
The time periods?
What?
Of the hours of operation?
Hours of operation.
Dawn to dusk or eight AM to eight PM? But I didn't see anything with regard to widths of the sidewalk. But I did see the hours of operation, so that is something that council could-
I think the problem you encounter from a justification standpoint is, in res, in many residential areas, I mean, Glendale Actually, it might be different, but you have less pedestrian traffic than you do in mixed use and commercial zones, And so it's harder to justify that there's gonna be, you need to restrict the ability to have a roaming vendor on a sidewalk Where you don't have that level. But again, I'm happy to look at it and, and, and let you know if that's something we can do.
It all has to, it all has to come back to the safety issue.
Correct.
Objective safety reasons for any restriction.
Safety or, you know, health or welfare, but yeah, again, crowding, overcrowding in the streets, that sort of thing.
And when you say justification, it's in case of a challenge, a legal challenge, right?
Correct.
So some of these five cities that was mentioned here, they had this ordinance almost a year, over a year. They had no challenges yet, and they're one of the most restrictive ones. So I think we need to go high, and if there's a challenge, then we can, we can scale it down a little bit. But I don't think we would be challenged on trying to protect the residential neighborhoods, so.
Question. When we issue permits, can we, can we decide which location that permit is good for, or is it, or is it a citywide permit?
Well, the stationary, I could run wrong permit, the stationary one you certainly can't, the roaming, they're not supposed to be, they're not-
Okay, so roaming, obviously, you can.
Right.
But, but a stationary, we can say, this hot dog guy, we don't want you in front of Giggles, we want you further up the street.
Well, we'd have, again, if we're saying we don't want you in front of Giggles, we'd have to identify a health or a safety reason why.
Too narrow, or it's too much traffic.
There's too much pedestrian traffic.
Splattering grease or whatever.
Correct. But I think, as I said, as we envision it for the stationary, one of the cities, I can't remember which one, has that as part Of their permit requirement, you have to identify where you're gonna be.
Locations.
Correct.
And is there a limit that we can have on the number of licenses?
The statute specifically says you cannot limit the number unless you make a finding that is necessary for objective Health or safety criteria. And so my, my only, my only warning there, and I think it's something we have to monitor as you go along, we've had some increase In sidewalk vending perhaps, but not a, not an influx, and I think it'd be hard to make the finding at this point in time That you need to limit the number. Now, if it turns out we get all these applications for people that wanna be in a certain part of Glendale, that's something We would look at, but I don't think you have the, you might not have the record now to, to do that.
Okay.
Um, my, I guess my last question. Mr. Lemo mentioned keeping them away from the door of the establishments and keeping them a certain distance away. Can we, can we say that, can we state that distance, or, or can we just say according to the, the width of the building On the other side of the door, that sort of thing? How can we keep them away? I mean, it seems like it's logical to keep them away from the doorway, the pathway into the-
So, for one, you can certainly prevent them from blocking access to an entrance or exit to a building. Some cities have actually had a distance requirement, I think Pasadena has a quick distance requirement, three feet, ten, I think That's a, that might, that might be logical, or five or ten feet. I think once you say fifty feet from the doorway, then you're basically blocking the entire sidewalk. So I think it has to be reasonable. If that's, if the council wants that, we'll include it, and we'll, we'll make a recommendation on what's, what's appropriate in that regard.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see something like that, anyone else?
Is that something the rest of the council?
Can you, can you look into it again?
Similar vendor cannot go in front of the hamburger place if they're selling hamburger or clothing, as I mentioned.
I, I don't think you can have that as a basis for, for regulation. So, and I think that was Mr. Lemo's point, well, maybe you can't do that, but maybe you can do, making sure that there's a certain Distance requirement between exits and exits, so in that way, whatever the vendor is, if it's a hot dog vendor, whatever, they're not Right there in front of the, of any particular store. But again, it has to be based on the access, the foot traffic, the, you know, the people, if, you know, you have a popular Hot dog stand that sets up shop anywhere in downtown, and all of a sudden they create lines that block pedestrian traffic, I think that's a basis to regulate. We just have to identify that.
Mr. Carpet, yeah?
I have one more, and that is within twenty-five feet of on-street valet loading zone, any designated passenger loading zone, Or any taxi cab stand.
That's part of Pasadena's?
That's part of West Hollywood's.
Okay.
All right, throw that in.
Sure.
I just have a comment on the hours of operation. In a residential zone, we can say dawn to dusk.
Yes.
Limitation. But how about in a commercial zone? When they can stay open, right, hour limitation. We can't say dawn to dusk, can we?
That's right, especially in commercial zones, because those businesses are open past dusk, obviously.
So can we say?
Eight PM?
I mean, the businesses can be open twenty-four hours, right?
Correct. And I think you have some reasonable regulation, I think eight PM is too early, maybe if, if we have general operations, A lot of operations, they have to close by ten, maybe not close by ten, but they have, there's certain activities they have to stop engaging In at a certain time. We'll, we'll kind of survey the cities.
Throw something in there.
We'll survey the cities and kind of see what that, I do think eight PM is a little too, too early, because a lot of, you know, Restaurants and entertainment venues and whatnot, they're open that late, I think, I think it'd be, we'd be hard pressed to say That's different. They have to mirror what's in the, in the area in general. You're right, seven-eleven's twenty-four-seven, but most, most, most businesses close at a certain time.
I think that's where the sanitation condition come to play, because if you're open from ten AM until ten PM, that's twelve hours, And you have no running water, right? If you have a cart, stationary cart, you don't have a running water, where do you wash your hands if you, if you serve food?
Well, that's the health department.
Yeah. But if I can, the other thing about if it's, if they're there after eight PM, that's when most pedestrians are out and about, And it gets more crowded in the, in some areas, and so it would, seems like it would be better to close them down earlier, Like at eight PM before it gets too crowded. That just might-
I'm just, I'm just looking at the, what nine forty-six says, that the regulations cannot be more restrictive than those affecting Nearby businesses, but I leave that, I know you're gonna be doing some work on this, if you could come back with some-
Okay.
Options on that for us. Okay, so we're giving you a bunch of stuff, doesn't mean we're gonna adopt all of that, or adopt any of it, but at our next Meeting, or at next time it comes before us, we can go through and, and vote on that stuff.
Can we have a timeline on this, or?
You know, I really would, before, we're, you know, first of all, I guess the question to the council is, would you like it before? I mean, the holiday season technically starts in Thanksgiving, so that's right around the corner. We could shoot before then, but that's, you're really talking about, we'd have to be back to council next week and then adopt On November fifth, because we're dark on the twenty. It, that becomes problematic at a point. I was hoping like we would have till this, early December to bring you something.
Yeah.
And then, but they, with the caveat that we need to sort of coordinate internally within the staff, because it's not just, Like I said, the drafting is, I say this, I'm not drafting it, Carmen is, but the drafting part is, is more straightforward than, Than actually making sure that the, all the operations can actually do what we, what we're proposing to do, including the permitting Process, I mean, that's, that's the part. So the caveat is, I wanna confer with the city manager and then get back to the council on the timing.
Let me ask you, so right now, a vendor can come to the city of Glendale and sell his hot dogs or glasses, et cetera?
Right, correct. And we have, we currently have a peddler's permit, and people are getting them, but we, we're not, we're not enforcing That requirement, because our only enforcement mechanism under our code today is the criminal, and we can't do that.
The one I'm really familiar with is, well, let me start by saying the vibe is that, oh my God, I mean, this is gonna be The biggest thing in the world, it's gonna be an invasion. There are vendors all over LA, Santa Monica, Culver City, I've seen them everywhere. We've got one guy selling hot dogs late at night in front of a local nightclub. I actually saw it and was kind of a bit startled, oh wow, they're dancing, drinking, and they're coming out here and eating Hot dogs, that's quite a mix. But I don't think it's the end of the world, I mean, you know, we're gonna do this ordinance, and I don't think we're gonna be Swamped by anyone, I don't think Christmas is gonna be ruined by a bunch of vendors all of a sudden descending on, on Glendale. So, you know, let's just get it done, but I just don't find that people trying to earn a living, these people aren't criminals, They're just trying to make some money, either selling food or articles, whatever, they're not stealing from anyone. It's not the end of the world, folks, and that's the vibe that I'm picking up tonight. We talk about the state being so onerous and this and that, and free enterprise, et cetera. Here are people just trying to make a living, and we're making it seem like they're, they're out to steal from us. They're not out to steal anything. They haven't gotten any subsidies from the city, like other people that run companies in this town have. No one subsidized anything. They're just coming here to try to sell something. If it turns into a problem, then we'll deal with it, but I don't think we have to be so prescriptive and so uptight About what may happen, when in fact, nothing's happened to date, except one person trying to sell his hot dogs in front Of a nightclub. It was late at night when I saw it, by the way.
Okay, I, I think we're trying to be even, even-handed in this, and I, I appreciate entrepreneurship as well as The next person, but also we have to balance sort of the rights of the existing businesses and that, but I look forward To continued robust discussion when this comes before us. Mr. Carpet, yeah?
I think December is a little bit too late, I mean, it's just, this, this ordinance was passed, this assembly bill Or, or senate bill was passed when?
It became effective January first.
Of?
This year.
Then that's, that is a problem, because we are, we are pushing September, October, and we're, we're just talking about this issue. We could have done this six months ago, so it wouldn't have been an urgency matter like this. I think the business owners have the right as well. They spend tens of thousands of dollars trying to maintain their businesses, their investments, they pay taxes, they, they do Everything, and then all of a sudden, somebody's getting into the same business, not following the same rules, and that is not fair. That's just not, flat out not fair. And it's not just in Glendale, in everywhere. I don't think it's, it's a, it's a right thing to do, but now we are, they're tying our hands behind, behind our backs, But I think we need to bring this back sooner than later. What is-
So how soon? So that was, that was, you know, probably, let me turn to Mr. Tocari, I know that.
You're an adjourned member of the city council.
Mayor Najarian, members of the council.
So implement it, let me just interrupt. Implement it as an urgency ordinance, to have it go into effect the next following week, correct? We have to have certain findings.
Right.
And so if it takes you two weeks to prepare this...
To me, yeah. I think what we're thinking is November 5th, we could bring it back.
That's the earliest.
The earliest.
It's a heavy agenda.
That way, if you want it to have an effect before Thanksgiving, because we're dark on the 12th. So November 5th, you bring it, November 19th, you, it takes effect. Alternately, we could bring on the 19th, and it would take effect December 5th.
3rd.
3rd. So...
But the earliest would be the November 5th, taking, oh no, I'm sorry, November 12th?
There's...
Getting into effect November 5th.
He has the dates, he has the dates.
Again, November 5th is, I mean, that report's...
Go ahead, John, jump in.
The earliest would be November 5th. It is a very heavy agenda, however, it wouldn't come back until November 19th. There is no meeting on the 12th. Those meetings were canceled.
So wouldn't, so it's introduced?
On the 5th.
And then...
Adopted on the 19th.
So I'm out of town on the 19th. I don't know if that's good news for you guys or bad news, but I'm going to be, I'm going to be away. I would, I have full faith in all of you, so I don't want that to, I don't want that to slow this down. So let's shoot for that earlier date, the 5th. To be introduced the 5th, to be voted on on the 19th. That's the soonest.
And we should have a special meeting on the 12th instead of canceling the 12th, but that's another Jerry Springer show.
Well, we can...
We can do the 12th instead of the 19th.
Because you're not, yeah...
I mean, it's up to you guys. I don't want to...
Because you're out of town on the 19th, right? Instead of canceling the 12th, maybe we should have a meeting on the 12th, but then cancel the 19th. That's just an idea.
The 12th, 5th, we will discuss the issue, you will be here, right? You're going to be here.
And it'll be, right, it'll be introduced.
Right, so we'll discuss.
So we could have the substantive discussion on the 5th in any event. And a lot of times, it's just a routine to approve the final vote. So let's stick to that. And that's as soon as we can do it. I know there are folks, DGA wants it done ASAP. This is about as fast as we can do.
That's ASAP, is a good idea.
Yeah, this is as fast, this is like, this is concierge service by the city attorney's office. And we know you've got a ton of other things to do, but let's deal with this and get it going. Mr. Quintero?
Yeah, I have a question. So in addition to the hot dog vendor on brand, is there anyone else that's kind of set up business on our sidewalks and is currently engaged? Yeah, who else?
Who else, Mr. Lemo?
We actually have, Mayor, council, we actually have three other people that are selling the most ridiculous things you'd ever want to see, both at the Galleria entrances and at both entrances to the Americana. I'm here tonight speaking on DGA, but as you know, you got a letter...
We did. We got a letter from Caruso affiliated, indicating that they were uncomfortable with a lot of the aggressive sales tactics by certain vendors.
And I can tell you that on November 15th, we will probably have two dozen merchants because that's what we've had every other year, between Colorado and Artside.
And the three that are selling are selling what? What kind of merchandise?
They're selling beads on a stick, they're selling balloons, light-up hats that you wear, not that you and I would wear, but it's really a lot of junk, and they're blocking entry to the crosswalk.
Okay.
And there are also other vendors outside downtown on Chevy Chase, some on...
Yeah, there's a couple on San Fernando, too.
San Fernando.
Stationery?
Stationery.
It is stationary, yeah.
I've seen one on the weekend.
Okay, so we're moving forward with this. We're, it's starting to become an issue.
I want to go on the record, and I really respect people who work instead of just asking for money. I really respect that. But I think we need to have rules, and everybody will follow the same rules, and that would be a great thing.
Okay. So you have a whole bunch of direction.
Correct.
Let's take roll on, would someone like, that's right, let's get a motion.
I'll make the motion with all the directions.
There's a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Tuktalian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Carpeian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Okay, thank you. I want to return to...
Regular schedule, four minutes.
The regular, yes, where we left off, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Mayor and council, next is a three-minute portion of public comments as well as community event announcements. Those will limit themselves to three minutes versus speaking for five minutes at the conclusion of the council meeting.
Okay. Again, I apologize to folks who wanted to speak earlier but were delayed because of us taking this item. I thank you for your patience in this. Tony Passarella?
Please go.
See, unfortunately, we lost one. Eugene Berberian, Eugenie Berberian.
Honorable Mayor Najarian and council members, good evening. I'm a little nervous. This is my first time that I've ever done this, so please bear with me. I am here to talk about driveway standards which are affecting our family at this point. My name is Eugenie Berberian. My husband and I reside in the Rosboyn area for 10 years now on 826 Portola Avenue. We appreciate your time to hear and consider our plea to make changes to the ordinance 3032-130 on driveway standards. Consider to allow physically challenged, handicapped, disabled, and the elderly to expand, enlarge their driveway to accommodate safe and easy access to their cars, to be able to park side by side rather than tandem. Our community has changed since 100 years ago when the ordinance was established. We have a greater population, more buildings, two to four vehicles in each family, surrounding businesses impacting residential areas. Streets are filled with parked cars day and night. It is a physical hardship on the elderly and disabled to seek street parking. There is a large elderly population now living independently and functioning on their own in their homes. It is in the city's interest to provide a safe environment to form them, enable comfort, discourage unnecessary expense, and accommodate exceptions within reason. In closing, on behalf of the Glendale citizens which are affected by this old ordinance, we beg your attention and consideration to make this request change. Thank you.
Thank you. Katrina Munukyan? Katrina Munukyan, I'm sorry, we lost another one. I don't have any other cards for this portion of public comment. The next item...
Mr. Mayor, 88 under action items is Director of Community Development regarding submission of a grant application to the California Department of Housing and Community Development under the SB 2 Planning Grants Program. It was a resolution authorizing submission of the funding application in amount of $625,000, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary agreements and documents to apply, accept, and implement the funding.
Mr. Tuktalian?
We're going to go over to Viliya Zemetitiz. She'll provide us a quick brief on what SB 2 was, what the planning grant that we're requesting authorization to submit for is actually for, what the funds can be used for as well. I'd like to note that tonight is just us asking council for authorization to submit the application. If the funds are awarded, we would eventually come back to council and ask for authorization to accept the award and ask for the appropriation at that point.
Thanks, Viliya. Hope we didn't ruin your World Series-watching party by keeping you here.
Not at all, Mayor Najarian, not at all, so...
Okay, thank you for sticking around.
Of course. Well, good evening, Mayor Najarian, council members, again, as stated, thank you, Mr. Tuktalian. This is simply a request to submit a grant application. The State's Department of Housing and Community Development established Planning Grants Program. According to Senate Bill 2, Senate Bill 2 was a housing package that was signed into law by the governor in 2017 that was aimed at addressing the state's housing shortage and high housing costs. Funds are limited to cities and counties only, and this is geared toward the production and planning and approval of housing. Glendale, in this case, is eligible for a $625,000 grant. Applications are due on November 30th, and the council resolution is a required part of the application submittal. There are four requirements that each of these cities and counties need to meet, and Glendale meets them all, those being a Housing and Community Development compliant housing element, recent annual reports progress submittals, that the proposed projects show the required nexus to accelerated housing production, and that they be consistent with the state's planning priorities. Now, the awarded grants are very limited in scope. We are only able to use them for housing-related planning activities and strategies such as updating our general plans, updating the zoning ordinance, preparing program EIRs, and improving local processes that expedite local planning and housing production. For our application, we are proposing four projects. Those four projects being the first, the tropical transit-oriented development, that would be to create zoning and associated design and development standards for the TOD Zone. Second would be to update design and development standards for all commercial corridors and centers in the South Glendale community plan area. Next one would be to improve the design and the development standards in multifamily residential zones, and that would be to ensure that the small sites can reach their full development potential. Last but not least, to evaluate two recently acquired sites for the maximum affordable housing development potential, and this would be the AT&amp;T site and the Tobin World project site. Now, these four planning activities fit into the department's goals. The first goal being to complete the tropical zoning. Now, this is a requirement as part of the South Glendale Community Grant, and it's consistent with the Metro Grant requirements. Second would be to create objective and predictable design and development standards, and these would be very similar to the ones that we proposed and that you approved for the downtown specific plan. So these would result in measurable, quantifiable criteria that would address things such as site plan, mass and scale, design and detailing, and these would be specifically geared for multifamily residential and mixed-use residential projects. And the last would be to maximize the development potential of the recently acquired properties for those affordable housing projects just stated. With that, staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution authorizing staff to submit this application for the $625,000 SB 2 grant, and if the grant is awarded, staff will be returning to council for the appropriation of the funds. That concludes my brief staff presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Carpeian?
No, I just wanted to say, Mr. Mayor, if there are no questions or comments, I'll move the item.
Second it? Thank you. If there are no other comments...
I was going to say briefly, I was, as I said a little bit earlier, I was with League of California Cities. They were discussing this issue for some strange reason. The lady who was presenting the money which is available through SB 2, and I spoke to her, and I was told that City of Glendale already applied for it, but today I was told that we did not apply for this money, and we are trying to do it at this time, and I am in favor of it. I just wanted to add, thank you for the presentation.
And the good thing is, we're not too late. We're still in the time period. I think it's roll call time. Councilmember Tuktalian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Carpeian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian? Yes. What is the next item?
Next item is number 12, oral communications, five minutes. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. I do have four cards, Mayor.
You? Susan Wolfson?
I'm Susan Wolfson, a homeowner in the city of Glendale for 12 years, and I want to thank you first for your service to our city and for allowing us to address our concerns directly to you. Tonight, I'm going to feel like a broken record maybe because I think some of these issues have been raised already, but I wanted to talk about Senate Bill 330 and Assembly Bill 68, which were passed and signed by Governor Newsom a couple of weeks ago. These two bills are clearly placeholders for Senate Bill 50, which was shelved, but which will undoubtedly repeat on us like a bad penny. These types of legislation will ruin our single-family neighborhoods in California, and they're going to detract from the quality of life in our golden state that is so attractive. It's popular lately to hammer California for its alleged housing shortage and to blame everything on that, including homelessness. I think a more comprehensive analysis of the facts would yield a more nuanced picture of the situation, housing costs here in California and elsewhere, as well as how much we should build and the ways in which that should proceed. For example, if you calculate a trend line and you don't correct for the extreme slowdown that took place during the Great Recession, that's not an accurate picture of the truth of what's going on here and elsewhere. In any case, I don't believe we can build our way out of any such crisis, whatever its dimensions turn out to be. I think it's very important for the public to understand the ways in which these types of legislation are going to affect us. They will basically destroy our single-family neighborhoods by allowing three or more units on lots that are presently zoned for single-family homes. And what this basically means is that anybody can come in and build an unattractive apartment building right next to your house. There's no provisions in these bills for compliance with historic preservation rules or off-street parking requirements or like even design standards. This is going to really change single-family neighborhoods into apartment neighborhoods. It's against what people want, I believe. So the bottom line is, I'm here to implore you to do whatever you can to fight this intrusion. I feel like it's a war on local governments, on smaller governments, by larger governments. We in this state don't want the federal government to tell us what to do, and I think that local communities don't want the state telling them what to do. It's simple. It's very simple. It's not going to be easy, but it is simple. So please, fight for us. I don't think we have time to wait. These things are being passed day after day after day, and I ask you, please, to do as you did in 2012 when the redevelopment agency was dissolved and this city fought to get its money back. Please do that type of thing again, whatever it takes. And again, I thank you for the opportunity to express my concerns to you.
Thank you. Alex Kachaturian?
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, honorable council members and city staff. My name is Alex Kachaturian. I own property in the Greater Downtown Glendale Community Benefit District. On June 12, 2018, the Glendale City Council adopted a resolution expressing its intention to form a property business improvement district known as the Greater Downtown Glendale Community Benefit District. Prior to the initiation of these proceedings, New City America, the company which would be managing the special benefits district, conducted a petition drive to collect signatures from property owners who wanted their parcels to be included in the new community benefit district. The deadline for submitting petitions... The deadline for submitting petitions was set for June 11, 2018 by 5:00 p.m. The final petition results showing 30.42% support were received by city staff and were reported at the city council meeting on June 12, 2018. Ordinance number 5771 added Chapter 4.46 to the Glendale Municipal Code relating to the establishment of community benefit districts. The petition requirement in Section 4.46.030 of the Glendale Municipal Code requires property owners paying more than 30% of the total assessments to sign the petition before the city council proceeds with the ballot phase for the establishment of a property business improvement district. At the city council meeting on June 12, 2018, it was announced that district property owners met the requirement of the city's community benefit district ordinance number 5771 by submitting qualified petitions from property owners paying more than 30% of the assessments to be levied. Based on this information, the city council moved forward with the initiation of proceedings to establish the district. I looked carefully at the petition results and noticed three parcels which are city-owned but incorrectly represented as owned by GGP Homart 2, the operator of the Glendale Galleria. These parcels comprise the two city-owned parking structures for the Glendale Galleria. I verified with the Los Angeles County Tax Assessor's Office that these parcels are indeed owned by the City of Glendale. The operator of the mall has a leasehold estate interest in these parcels, not a fee simple ownership interest. And the assessor identification, excuse me, the assessor identification numbers for these parcels are 5642-001-923, 5642-001-944, and 5695-005-935. Notice, these are all 900 numbers. Only petitions signed by property owners, not lessees or ground lessors, should have been accepted and counted towards the 30% requirement. Unless GGP Homart 2 was authorized to petition on behalf of the City of Glendale, the response from GGP Homart 2 for these city-owned parcels should be excluded because the record owner, which is the City of Glendale, did not sign the petition for these three parcels. The total assessment levied against these parcels is $67,327.92, or 4.6% of the total budget for the district. Excluding these parcels from the petition results would mean the more than 30% petition requirement was not met, and the ensuing resolution adopted by the city council to initiate proceedings for the establishment of the district was not duly authorized. I urge the city council to examine the accuracy of my claim, and if it concludes that New City America failed to produce more than 30% support via owner-signed and acknowledged petitions, then immediately initiate proceedings for the disestablishment of the Greater Downtown Glendale Community Benefit District. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, if you could look into that and let us know what the issues are.
We will. I seem to recall it was some issue that we addressed in the proceedings, but we'll get you an answer for sure.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
We'll have it up. And can you... Oh, you don't need the pointer?
No. You can distribute it up. I'll distribute.
Oh, sorry. Tell us whichever one you want to start from.
Very well. Mayor Najarian, members of the city council, and city staff, my name is Herbert Milano. Six weeks ago today, the city introduced an ordinance concerning the control of short-term rentals and the banning of vacation rentals in the City of Glendale. I guess pending further review and input, I have distributed to each one of you a report that I've compiled and analyzed in the past six weeks, and the purpose of this report is to give you a different perception and a analysis of what I have found with regard to the claims that the city made, and many of these claims, I think, are not corroborated. I used the California Public Records Act to validate the claims made on this report, and it is very troubling for me. For example, in this report, there's a section that says that these short-term rentals constitute a menace to the public health and safety or a public nuisance. There is no corroborating evidence for that, that there is loud noise, parties, trash, inconsiderate gas, parking issues, excessive coming and going. Also, there's no documentation on that. I did obtain reports from the Glendale Police Department, and out of nearly 1,500 reports of noise and music throughout the city in 2018, only three homes were found to be applicable with regard to these complaints. One of those is definitively a home that is an Airbnb. One of them appears to be out of that particular platform and is a party house, and all of these homes are in the tiniest parts of Glendale, very nice neighborhoods, and I can understand why neighbors would have been upset about those events. I would like to say the following, that what is truly bothering about this report is that there are about 450 to 500 families that are going to be severely impacted. Many people do not want to share their homes, but because of the Great Recession, many people lost their pensions. Many people have had, they lost jobs. Many individuals have not been able to get back into the labor force because they are already past the age of 65, and they have looked at this opportunity for, that they now have an empty nest, that they could be able to sustain their mortgage or any loans or their livelihood by the use of short-term rentals. The city actually documents that the number of days is from around 19 to 90 days, which is the range that most of these homes are actually being used for this purpose, which means that they're not really doing it because they want to, but they're doing it because they have to. The fact that the city did not do an outreach, did not attempt to make, to provide the input from all of these property owners is a troubling one with regard to going forward. I also encountered other weaknesses that you'll see on my report. It's 12 pages long. I discuss the ongoing war between the hotel industry and Airbnb throughout the nation. I include also studies by Boston University with regard to the issues that are present with regard to these ordinance and similar ones that have appeared in other cities. But the important part, I think, for you to understand is that I tried to be fair and balanced with the whole approach. I've included problems that I see with Airbnb. I've also included practical solutions that the city council can consider to come up to a compromise that will satisfy the hotel industry, that will satisfy the potential issues in the nicest areas of Glendale, and I think that these compromises might give this report the type of nuance that I hope the city can consider in the future. My study is not complete. I have made other California Public Records Act requests to understand fully what the influence is of the hotel industry in Glendale, but I believe that behind the scenes, there might be a good possibility that pressures from the hotel industry, especially in all new, very high expensive construction, may want to have a competitive advantage. I address those as well. I think that you find my report nuanced. I researched it out. This is strictly my work. I have received no assistance from anyone else with regard to it, so I'm totally responsible for it. I hope that you're able to read it carefully, but I think that there's a lot of valuable things in it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I come here another day, I watch Mr. Garpetian talking about having a studio and this kind of activities in the future, and I was looking for swimming pools, public swimming pools. I just see one in the Pacific, in the school, which always is crowded, and I guess we need more swimming pools. With this hot summer weather, I guess that's a good idea to have swimming pools, and LA has in the park, so why we cannot have a park and pool, swimming pool, mix it together. There will potentially in the brand park, on the top of the hill, we can make a pool there nice, like Caribbean-style, palm trees and this kind of things. That's my imagination, I don't know. I just wanted to share, and I had, for swimming this summer, I should go. And this other good thing about that, people don't stay at home using electricity, ACs, they go outside, making friends, knowing each other. That's, I wanted to share. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The Pacific Pool is open at 6:00 a.m. The one on Pacific that you saw.
Yeah, it's the same crowd.
Not at 6:00 a.m. There's a few lanes open. But thank you. We all support swimming pools, and council has been, I think, a great supporter. I don't have any other cards. Two new business items?
Yes, yes. I have a...
Mr. Garpetian?
...business, Mr. Mayor. I moved out the matter entitled Chakbakhyan versus City of Glendale et al., Superior Court Case Number BC 709498, be compromised and settled for the full and complete sum of $25,000, and the same is hereby approved and accepted, and the Director of Finance is authorized to issue a warrant in said sum for upon the execution by the plaintiff of a release and dismissal with prejudice.
Second. Roll call. Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Quintero?
Yes. I move that the City Attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement with the law firm of Best, Best &amp; Cregger, LLP, to represent the interests of the city in the matter of Crown Castle Fiber, LLC, versus the City of Glendale et al., Case Number CV 19-085180DWJCX. The retainer agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a budget and fee cap for the handling of said matter.
Roll call. Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
We have no further business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. We are adjourned.